The meeting's getting ready to start. Didn't want to be late. Thank you.
Hey, Tom.
Hey, what's happening?
What's going on?
I'm not telling, come on.
You having a good day?
I am. This has been quite an enjoyable day.
Good. Is it a special day for you?
Yeah, it's a little bit special.
A little bit special. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I don't know, the mayor issued a proclamation naming it Tom's Frost Day.
Wow.
It's been kind of exciting all day long, really.
Good deal. I'm glad you're enjoying it.
If I'd have known I was going to live this long, I would have taken better care of us.
Tell us all about it. Oh, who's that cutie?
Oh, sorry. She's my daughter. I'm trying to get everything set up. Oh, thank you.
Look at there.
She's a little ham.
Oh, aren't they all, I tell you? I tell you.
Did I just X out of the agenda? I am so ready to go back to normal.
I know. This is a little different, I tell you.
Just getting everything all set up.
And we could have sung happy birthday to Tom in person today.
Exactly.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Tom. Happy birthday to you.
Boy, I missed out on that deal.
Boy, I tell you.
Charlene, you made it. You're muted. That's okay.
Muted. Devin, who is owner?
I don't know. It might be someone in the media. Charlene, can you talk for me? Something's wrong with audio.
And it's not showing, muted.
No, I muted her. I thought something might be wrong, so that's why I wanted her to test it out.
So how was your day?
My day was good. I can't complain. Every day's a good day as long as I'm doing well and family's well. So it's been a good day. I've not done anything near as exciting as get a proclamation issued in my name, but...
Yeah.
But it's been a good day. It's been a warm day. I thought I was, you know, I tried to get up every day and go walking and I got a little behind this morning. I got out there about 10:30 and it was hot.
Been a pretty day all day.
Yeah, it has been a nice day. It was just hot to be walking, but I had to do it, so.
You know, you've only got a finite number of heartbeats in life and you shouldn't waste them going down the street.
Going down the street walking. I tell you though, it just gives me, just it starts my day and it gets me going. I get some time to think while I'm out there and do a little praying and I'm good.
Good, good for you.
Hey Devin, I think I'm on now, right?
Hey, yes, you are. Good, we got that situated beforehand, so we're ahead, maybe.
Oh, man. They said we've got a tropical storm maybe brewing.
In the Gulf? It's normally good for us.
Yeah.
Tough if you live on the coast, but it's good for us. Usually kicks a little moisture up here.
Right, and we need that. You got a cake for your birthday and stuff?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a cake for your birthday?
We do. We do. We've had dinner, but we have not had, cut the cake yet, so.
Okay, so y'all did an early dinner?
Yeah, we did it.
Happy birthday, Tom.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Gosh Dewey, you came in a little late. I sang happy birthday to him, you missed it.
Okay, let's do it again, Mary, okay?
Happy birthday, Tom.
Thank you, thank you.
Peggy, how are you all? Good. Tom, did you get lots of cards and stuff today?
About 120.
Wow.
Patty told me about two weeks ago, she said, "Do not go to the post office." Do not go. And I'm thinking, she's ordered something from Amazon, she doesn't want me to see what it is. So I didn't think a lot about it. And she brought in a stack of cards this morning, yeah, this morning. We've been having a big old time laughing at the cards. Got one from Barack Obama and Michelle Obama.
Wow.
Got one, got one. Well, do you know Steve Barron?
Yeah.
I go to church with Steve Barron. And it all, all those people, Barack and Donald Trump, all had his return address on the cards. I don't know how he pulled his influence to get that done.
Wow.
Well, that's impressive.
That's pretty neat.
Actually, I'm pretty sure he forged them, but let's just let it lie.
Yeah, just believe what you believe.
That's right.
Not Steve, he wouldn't do that, would he?
I have to tell you, Tom, it was kind of hard to find a 70th birthday card in a quarantine environment. So that's why mine was a congratulations card.
You know, it's amazing. It's amazing. We did not have a lot of, I did not get a lot of duplications. I was kind of surprised. I would have thought looking for 70th cards to see a lot of duplications.
I couldn't find one, so. So you got a card congratulating you on your milestone, which was really graduation, except I think 70's a milestone.
Oh, my goodness. That is neat, Peggy. Like the mayor's joined in.
Do we ever, before we go live on this thing, do we see the minutes? I can swear we used to read the minutes, see the minutes.
They're in that packet, but that Norma's...
But they're not.
The minutes? No.
Hi, this is Norma. The minutes should be in your packet.
Yeah, I thought I read them in the packet.
Well, I, maybe I just didn't open the right thing because I just, I got the agenda, but I didn't see the packet.
Did you get the one from Norma?
I don't know. I'm sitting here thinking, I'm getting ready to vote on minutes that I didn't read, so.
I read them. It was the packet that Norma sent.
Well, let me see.
There's some that came like that.
There was three sets of minutes that are going to be considered for tonight.
Yeah, there was the...
Norma, what I have from you is the council list, the mandatory cyber security.
It's the email that I sent you on Friday. Yeah, it was. I'm not sure I understand.
I don't. I didn't get...
Lex is going to join us?
She says she didn't understand.
I'm going to resend it, Peggy.
No, no.
Yeah, because that would be the eighth, but I don't have it. I mean, I've put all my emails in order by people and stuff while I've had all this time. And it just, I realized that I didn't have minutes, so. Did you send them to my government or my...
Yes, yes. I just, I just resent it to you where it shows that I sent it on Friday and it has your name on it. And it is the Odessa-gov.
Let's see if I get it, because the last thing I showed for me was on Wednesday. In fact, the last email I got was last Wednesday, which means probably something's happened to my email again.
I bet it has.
I may have gone to spam.
Hello, everyone, it's Natasha.
How are you doing?
I'm good. Now, I got it, Tom, you're...
Hello, everyone, this is Reverend Shelton.
Hey Reverend Shelton, how are you?
I'm doing fine from being an older person today.
So what's wrong with that?
Today is my birthday, that's why.
What? Birthday too. Birthday too. Who's?
Oh, yeah, it's Tom.
Reverend Shelton. That's right.
Happy birthday, Michael.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. Yeah. Wow. That's interesting.
So do you mind if I ask how old you are?
I'm 63.
You.
So you were hoping y'all were twins. Y'all aren't twins, Tom.
No, no.
His big brother.
Got here a little earlier than he did.
Got here a little earlier.
Hey, Mary, it's time for you to sing, it's time for you to sing happy birthday again. Now we can hear it, okay?
Well, here's the deal, though. You know, I do it one time, do it well, and I'm sorry.
Mercy, I should have known there'd be an excuse.
Oh, gosh.
I can say one thing, I'm blessed.
Yes, indeed. Now, my birthday and I'm awfully blessed, I tell you.
I'm blessed to be this age.
The only thing worse than getting old is not getting old.
That's right.
That's it.
Well, I was just watching the nightly news and they're talking about the first hurricane.
Talking about what?
First hurricane, possible hurricane coming in. First tropical storm. That's what we need. Murder, murder hornets and everything else, so bring on the hurricanes.
We don't need that. We do not need that.
Sir, but you know they're coming.
We pray that it moves the other way.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone, this is Michael.
Hey, Mike.
Good afternoon, Michael.
How's everybody doing?
Great. Well, how are you doing?
Sorry?
How are you doing?
Oh, we're trying to keep up with everything, so you know, you don't realize just how much time you spend on this little COVID thing.
Oh, I betcha. I will certainly be glad when that is not the case, that we're not doing that, but it's like it's going to be a minute. Oh, yeah.
All right, it is, you can go ahead and get started. So I will lead us in a prayer, so if you would please bow your head. Father, thank you. Father, we thank you for the healing that you've done COVID-19. And Father, we continue to ask for more healers. For those that are ill in the nursing homes, especially Lubbock and Amarillo and Midland. Father, we just pray that you would heal those. Father, we've lost too many. Father, we pray for wisdom as we go through this meeting, Father, and we will give you all the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
This time Councilmember Dean will recite the pledges for us.
If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance...
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic...
Which is...
Which it stands.
God, indivisible, with liberty...
And justice for all.
Now for the Texas flag. Honor the Texas...
Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the... Texas, one state...
Under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Dean. Under proclamations, awards, and presentation, we will have the Census 2020 update with Ms. Charlene McBride. The floor is yours, Ms. McBride.
Thank you. Devin, did you want to... I'm not sure what happened.
Charlene, are you waiting for the presentation?
Yes.
Devin is working on pulling that up.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was on mute. Yes, I'm getting it. Of course, everything's slow when you need it to be fast, so.
Of course.
Got it, though. Okay, let me start sharing and... Here we go.
Okay. Well, thank you all so very much for having me here this evening. As you know, there are a lot of things going on operational-wise for Census. And of course, we are trying to go as much virtual as we can, which is the only thing we basically have been doing lately. We've all been home, they haven't released any of us, and hopefully they'll actually start releasing us here maybe within a week, two weeks. But right now, we stand, and these are figures as of this morning. The nation is at 58.6% on response and Texas is at 53.2%. That leaves us with the ranking of 40th in the nation. So there's a lot that we feel that is due to that because of some of the operations that ceased. So we're hoping that this is going to pick up here pretty quick once we start operations back up. If you'll note, Ector is at 44% and 30% of that has been done by the internet. The remainders have been either phone calls or the actual mailing for those that have already received their mailings. Okay, this is probably the biggest news that we've had in quite a while. And that's that on April 13th, the Census Bureau is seeking statutory relief from Congress for 120-day additional calendar days to deliver the final apportionment numbers. Now, we have already had changes in our operations, but they're actually... In order for us to actually change the apportionment and the redistricting dates, that has to be approved by Congress. So hopefully, when they get back, they'll be able to go ahead and vote on this and let us know if that's okay or not. The apportionment dates have been pushed to April the 30th of 2021. And they're wanting to push the dates for the redistricting numbers is going to be July the 31st, 2021. If Congress doesn't approve that, it still goes back to the December 31st for apportionment. And then the actual numbers to our states will start flowing in the first part of March. Now, as for operations, field operations, the update leave is the one that was actually hurt the most because that is where we actually go ahead and hand-deliver those questionnaires to the households that don't receive mail. That has been pushed to June the 13th to July the 9th. And they feel that that's pretty good. I know that in some states, they're going to push that date up as states open. They will go ahead and start actually training. The group quarters has now been moved to July 1st to September 3rd. This is the one that we were all really interested in, in this area because of so many of the man camps. And I know that we've had a lot of people leaving, but the thing you need to remember is the question is, where were you at April 1, 2020? Okay? And then the transitory is the other one, which is the RV parks and some of the service-based agencies. That is going to be September 3rd to September 28th. And then, of course, the non-response follow-up, which is the last phase, is now going to be August 11th to October 31st. Now, update leave is probably one that has hit rural Texas the most. And that's how come we're seeing so many or such low response numbers, and that's because no one has received anything in some of our rural areas. Update leave is when we actually dropped off the invitation at the front door of the homes. There was no contact with any of the individuals, it's just dropping it off. And then, of course, they were wanting to go ahead and mail letters to go ahead and let them know that this was going to be happening after that. So this is not, I mean, this is not, or hasn't happened. In some areas it has, in some it hasn't. Now, as for Ector County, we do have a couple of areas that were affected. And I'll go, as soon as I go to the next phase or online, I'll show you exactly what happened. Again, most of this is just going to be the rural area, so it's really not affecting us. We have pretty much received all of our individuals in Ector County and especially in Odessa, the city of Odessa. They have received their questionnaire or their invitation letter. Next. This is a map and you can really not see that, so that's how come I wanted to go to this other map after this presentation and show you exactly what we're doing. So let me see if I can go ahead and switch here.
Are you going to take over?
Yes.
So I'm going to stop sharing and then I'm going to let you share, okay?
Okay. Okay, this is a different map. This is actually called the CUNY map. This is different from the Rome or the Response Rate map that you see on Census. This, if you go to texascounts.org, you'll be able to go ahead and see it on the right-hand side of that page. And you can actually click on that. And this is a little bit more informational than others that we've seen. I like it because it's more detailed. As you can see, I have Ector County up on top and it shows you what the actual rates are right now. The one that we're really looking at, of course, is West Odessa, and that's what we've been targeting the most. And if you click on the actual track, it will actually come up and tell you a little bit of details about that actual track. This is what I like about the most is that it really goes into detail at households. A lot of information that you can actually go in and get about that one track. So the most, here, let's see if I can get me out of here. Let's see here. So this is one of the tracks, like I said, that we've been focusing on. There's some tracks inside the city limits that we still need to go ahead and really look at. And of course, the outskirts is the one that's really, the ones that we were really, really looking at. And I'll go over a little bit about some of the things that we're doing to help with that. One of the maps I did want to show you was... Let's see here. This is the initial visit. So this is the initial way that they actually went ahead and sent out all the information to. As you can see, the update leave is the one that has not been done. So all the ones in the yellow are the ones that have not received any information yet from Census. So we've been targeting ourselves through partnership specialists, trying to get to these different areas. So as you can see, all of the city of Odessa has received some type of information. Some of it has been bilingual, some of it has just English, but a good portion of all of it. Like I said, they have received information on how they can go ahead and get online, call, or wait until they get their questionnaire. And I know by now, everyone that has received either the first or second or third letter, they have received their questionnaires by now. And we've talked to some people and that has happened. So again, this is the target area that we're going to be looking at. One of the other things that I've kind of wanted to show here was, we've always talked about the children. We've always talked about the rest that it is for the undercount, for the young kids. This is what we have and what shows the areas that we really need to concentrate on in Ector County. And as you can see, in the city of Odessa, we have some very high-risk areas, which is going to be all this right here. So what have we started doing to, um, address some of these issues that have with the low response rate and the different types of individuals that are not responding? Well, first of all, we have actually sent out a faith-based mailing. We had 129 mail-outs that we did the beginning of, actually, last Friday. Uh, so hopefully, we'll, um, go ahead and start seeing some of the churches do a little bit of talking about their, um, the census and encouraging them through their virtual masses that they're doing, virtual services. Um, also, we provided them with a flyer that they can go ahead and just copy and make copies so that they can go ahead and have it. And then we did some social media. Um, we've been, uh, sending out social media posts every day to all of our partners, to all of our, um, census or Complete Count Committee members, so they can go ahead and send out, so that those can go ahead and start, um, actually being posted out. Uh, the next thing we did is, on April 27th, um, they asked me to go ahead and put together a radio virtual MQA. Um, this is the first time it's ever been done. So, um, it took us probably about a week to kind of put it together, but we used La Ley Radio along with Luis Cardinals for an hour of, of just census. All we did was just talk about census, the importance of census, and then we had, um, some volunteers, some members from, uh, some of these tracks that we were looking at that needed to go ahead and come up. We pulled, uh, people from there to go ahead and talk about it. At the end of that hour and a half, we had over 100 calls. And from that 100 calls, we had 53 confirmed, um, questionnaires that had been filled out by them calling in and getting help filling it out. So it worked real well, so we went ahead and we had a little bit of, of kinks here and there, and then we decided to go ahead and do it May the 1st. We did it again at the same time, but a different audience. We had, um, 39 calls, and out of the 39, we had 33 confirmed. So we know that the process that we were doing and the kind of virtual event that we were doing um, is going to work. So, and by the way, no one has met those numbers yet, not in the nation. Everyone is trying it, no one has met as many as we've had the response that we did for this, that one hour. Um, so we went ahead and started focusing a little bit more on the schools. What we've done is, in all of the tracks that are low responding, we have identified the school that's in there, and during their meals program or with their meals program, we have provided swag or some kind of literature for them to go ahead and insert into all of the boxes, the meal boxes. We've done this also with the senior centers, and we've also done it with the, um, West Texas Food Bank. So that, we've been really aggressive in making sure that people still know that, that they need to still go in and, uh, do the questionnaire. And last is what we've done is, we went ahead and we did a virtual MQA. We kind of reversed it a little bit and changed a little bit of, of how we approached the, the parents. So the, the way that it's done is the principals sent out the invitations, letting them know that they can go ahead and call. So they call us, and in turn, we go ahead and we forward it over to, um, the census takers that actually will assist them. Um, to date, right now, um, the elementary that has had the most, and we've done, uh, five, no, four of the elementaries in those targeted areas, has been, um, VICE. They had a total of 76 people that have called, and that was done at noon. So I still don't have the numbers of what was confirmed and all, but that is a lot of people that have called in to make sure that their, uh, school is, is being counted or their kids are being counted. And the whole, the, what we're calling it is, um, count all the kids in P or VICE elementaries of all elementary, whichever elementary we're targeting. That is what we're using as the tagline for them to help. We do go ahead and give, um, they're entered into a raffle, and we do have prizes that we're giving, uh, the school, each school. And then, at the end, we will honor the one that has the most that's responded. Um, it's really working well, Mike Atkins with the Hector ISD has been really helpful in helping and putting this together. Um, so we're going to continue doing this throughout the schools. But the target that we will have is, once we start getting, um, the update leave and people start leaving that, uh, we will go ahead and start, uh, really focusing on those areas uh, a lot more than what we're doing right now. Right now, we feel that it's not beneficial for us to try and get them because they don't have their code. And with rural addresses, it's a lot harder to identify, um, through the census when they do the online because it does, it has to match the address. And they might have a different address than what the census does, so they're asking the rural areas to just wait until they actually get their questionnaire. Recruitment is back up. We will start recruit, actually, we've already started recruiting. Um, some of the individuals that had applied for the positions before, um, have opt-out. So we are now, now that we know that we have a kind of a date as to when we're going to start, they've gone actually and started recruiting again. I don't think we're going to have the problems on recruitment like we did, uh, last year this time. So, um, we're, we're hoping that, um, you know, once they finish, probably the end of, I think it's the end of May, and then the 1st of June is when they'll start training. So they're really ramping up that, um, that part, and you'll see a lot more of ads, a lot more stuff going on with the actual recruitment. So, um, that's really my, my report. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Charlene, I have a question, just a personal question. Um, I was in the process of moving, and I got my census report on my house on Shiloh, and I still was there most of the time, so I filled that one out. Then when I got into my new house, I got another census, uh, request for this address. And I just wrote on it that it was vacant at the time and sent it back. Is that what I'm supposed to do?
That's per, that's perfect, yes, because you've already been counted in one area, so yes, that's right.
Okay. It looks like there would be a lot of people that are jobless that would want to help with this now.
Yeah, that's what we're, we're kind of really keeping our fingers crossed that we'll, we'll go ahead and have that. And of course, a lot of the individuals are from this area, so that will, will help us even more. So, yeah, we're just keeping fingers crossed that we get there with our job numbers.
This is, this is Michael. On those low responding areas, um, I know you talked a little bit about a strategy, but, um, as in past census, you will commit, uh, the necessary resources to get that response rate up. Is that correct?
Yes, we're, we're trying to see a different, different methods, different ways that we can go ahead and do that. Um, through the county, the county still has funds for the CCC. So they've been helping out in some of the, um, like the mailings that we're doing and all. But once we start, uh, focusing on, like I said, on those areas that, that have the update leave, mail-outs will be done on probably more, I, I'm not sure about the swag. We do have some swag that the census has actually sent us now, so we do have some of that. Um, but we will be at different events as they, as they pop up. I know that we have some churches that might be doing some events. Um, I don't know about, um, if the city will be kind of ramping up later on in the years, some of the, uh, the events also. But like I said, we have on, until October 31st. So that is the deadline. That's the drop dead, deadline where they'll, they'll not be receiving any more responses.
And just to remind the council, uh, we, the city contributed $50,000 to this effort, and most, if not all of that, was directly for marketing, correct, Charlie?
Yes, it has been.
Uh, ads, bus wraps, and things of that nature.
Right, the bus wraps have really been wonderful. I think they've really reached out quite a bit, so those have really helped. The, um, ads that were put in the, the TV, the spots, those are good, and we're getting more spots. Um, there's another, uh, organization that has really been helping us out quite a bit, and that is, um, the Permian Counts. If you all ever get a chance to go and get on that, uh, website, um, they actually have figures that, that are catered to the Permian Basin. What they did is, they went ahead and had, um, the Perryman Organization actually go in and do a, a survey on how the census impacts the Permian Basin. Um, of course, it does include some of, um, New Mexico, but it really basically focuses a lot on Midland and Hector Counties. So if you, and then their Facebook has actually gone in, and they've interviewed and had a lot of, of, of our state local representatives go on there and actually, uh, support the census. But it's been very, very helpful for us because we've been able to go ahead and, um, get into some areas that we couldn't before, and that's what their whole, our whole goal was, is to help to make sure that wherever we were missing in some of the areas that both our CCCs were doing, they could go ahead and pick up. So they've been pretty good on doing, along with our CCCs. You do have a very strong CCC, by the way.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, Ms. McBride, for all your information.
Thank you. If anybody has any questions, any concerns, please give me a call. Um, Michael and Philip both have my phone number, so I'm always available to help out in any way. Like I said, our goal is to make sure that we, um, count everyone that is in Hector County, and thank you again.
So Charlene, is that one last question? This is, as we go along, will you actually have lists that will have streets, for instance, with the house numbers of people that did not respond? I mean, can this become very targeted to certain areas?
Yes, that is going to be part of the non-response follow-up. That's the last phase. So as, right now, as you're, everyone is sending in their, uh, questionnaires or calling or online, their, their address is checked off. So it's not going to be included as part of the update lead. So what, what they do is, they know which household or which house has not returned back their question, so it's that detail by household.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sarah Van will get, let you give a coronavirus update.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, thank you guys all for allowing me to be here to give you this update. Uh, I think, uh, it's very important for you guys to probably understand where we are, uh, as a community, as a country in this, and, uh, how you can help, uh, make decisions to continue to keep our community safe. Are you guys able to see my screen?
Yes.
So we'll start off with a, a little bit of an overview, and then I'll kind of walk through what our community has been through so far. Um, so here is the CDC's website, and it's talking about the total number of cases in the US. You can see about 1.3 million cases with 80,000 deaths. Uh, this is the, uh, breakdown by state. The reason I want to show you this is, you see this, how it lists widespread in certain states, in, in most of the states, in fact. Uh, I just want you to know that Texas is listed as defined areas only, not as widespread. So that's a, that's a difference. Uh, although our number is big, you have to remember our, uh, geography is much bigger. So that's why this is still defined areas. Um, if you look at our Texas map and our Texas case count, uh, we are at 40,000-plus cases, uh, over 1,000 fatalities, and the distribution is, uh, around the major cities, uh, with some of the, with some of our circles right here. This, uh, is cases of COVID-19 reported in the US, um, by the source of exposure. What I wanted to point out in this, this is the old, uh, information that CDC used to publish, and I think this was till about a week, week and a half ago. Uh, if you see here, this under investigation, 611,000 out of the 632, that's what I really wanted to point out. This is when you don't have it fully under control because you haven't investigated all your cases. So contact tracing is very important in knowing where you are and whether you have control over something or not. I wanted to show you guys this, this is how it was a couple of weeks ago, uh, for, for, this is for the entire US. And the majority were still under investigation. So now, let's move on to our, uh, county cases. So we have 100 cases in our county. Uh, one of the things I wanted to show you guys from the, the national website is what it means to flatten a curve. So these are new cases by day. This is when it started hitting the US, uh, in mid-March, and then you can see the rapid rise. This is when it was doubling, and then it started to stabilize. But I want you to notice what's happening right here and right here. This is when we started doing some reopenings. So as you can see, when we started doing some reopenings, there was a quick rise, and then it stabilized. And then we did another reopening, and then there was a quick rise, and then it's going to stabilize. Each time we do some level of reopening, there's going to be a rise of cases. Remember, the models that we looked at early on in this process said that we were going to have far more cases than we have now in our area. So the fact that we've been able to stabilize that number for our community is a big win for our community. I think, uh, a lot of different factors played a role. Obviously, one of those factors was the social distancing principles that we've been pushing so hard right from the very beginning. Uh, the fact that we were able to close down certain, uh, parts of our economy and businesses and, uh, public gatherings, that helped quite a bit. Uh, the weather and the dryness probably helped quite a bit as well. So we've been able to stabilize. So, uh, the, this is the overall, uh, US curve that is now flattened. But notice, these are the number of, uh, new cases, number of new cases each day. So even if you look at, uh, 5/11, which is yesterday, there's 18,000 new cases in the US. So I still want you guys to know that this is not gone. Uh, in our community, we're not seeing this, but there's 18,000 new cases in the US, uh, just yesterday. Here's another, uh, one I wanted to bring your attention to. This is the overall case distribution by ethnicity. And you can see that for the, for the, uh, for the Hispanic community, uh, that's about, you know, 25 or so, 27%, and for the non-Hispanic community, it's about 72%. Now, take that, uh, with, with the grain of salt, that the distribution, this is across the entire US. So the distribution across the entire US for the Hispanic community versus non-Hispanic community is different than the one that we have here. So we'll go over our numbers in a little bit. So here, you'll see the 100 confirmed cases that we have, 75% Hispanic, 25% non-Hispanic. What this tells you, uh, with our, with our Hispanic community, uh, being around 60-something, okay? 60-something percent of our Hector County residents are Hispanic. But there's a disproportionate number of people that, uh, from the Hispanic community that are getting affected by COVID-19. So that tells us there's some opportunity there for us to work to help our Hispanic community perhaps maybe understand and follow the social distancing principles a little bit more, uh, and that we can affect that. Uh, with 100 cases, although it's not, uh, thousands and thousands, so the validity of that number is dependent on the denominator. The denominator being small, you know, makes this number a little bit less valid, but it doesn't mean that we don't pay attention to it. Here is the epidemiologic curve for us, for our area here. Again, it hit us towards the end of March. Uh, and this is the, these orange bars are the new cases each day. Uh, the red lines are the deaths, so we've had four deaths, uh, on these four days. And these orange bars right here show you that there was a period of time where we had no cases. And then we did some reopening, and then we saw some cases. And each of these cluster of cases, these five cases, these four cases, these three cases, they've all been related to some sort of social gathering. Public health has been able to figure out exactly where those came from and what gathering they came from. So we do need to pay attention to this. Again, in the last couple of days, no new cases, so that's what you're seeing here. They've done quite a bit of contact tracing in public health, uh, and, uh, they've referred quite a few people for testing. Uh, there's, uh, you know, a small number that'll test positive even though they've referred quite a few. The last thing I want to go over, I guess, is the reopening, because that's what we really were talking about, and how you guys will have to make some decisions on how to keep the community safe. So these are minimum recommended health protocols released by, uh, Texas government, right? So Health Department releases, uh, released this, uh, on, I think, on May, before May 1st. So effective May 1st, these are the different parts that were. So effective May 1st, these are the different parts that were open. Effective May 5th, these were open. May 8th, these were open. And these are the planned openings for May 18. So this includes here your gyms and exercise facilities. It gives you protocols specifically for the facility, and it gives you protocols specifically for patrons to the facility. I want to go over just one of these as an example. So let's look at this one. That's a checklist for gym and exercise facility patrons. I'll highlight a few things. It talks about maintaining a six-foot separation. It talks about self-screening with all of, for all of these symptoms. And if you have any of these symptoms, to not go to the facility. It talks about disinfecting the equipment before and after use of the exercise machines and weights. It talks about wearing gloves that cover you from the wrist all the way to the fingers. It talks about, if possible, that you bring your own equipment to the gym to exercise. So they're being pretty serious about how to keep people safe for people that are going to gyms. And the last thing here is recommending a face mask, which, which they're recommending pretty much every single patron document that you would look at for any facility, it'll, it'll recommend a face mask. And if you're over age 65 or you have high risk factors for COVID, it tells you to stay out of it. The reason I bring that up is because I want us to understand how serious it still is and how cautious we still have to be. Because with 18,000 new cases yesterday in the U.S., it doesn't mean it's behind us. In our community, we haven't had a new case in a few days. But when we do get new cases, it's going to be because of clusters. Every single one of these openings can potentially create clusters and can potentially expose our, our residents. So we need to be very mindful and cautious as we go through this opening. And we need to still know that we have to, we can remain optimistic that this disease might have already gone through our community or is perhaps not going to hit our community. But we still need to remain cautious so that if it does, we will know how to control it. There have been several discussions we've had. The Mayor, myself, a bunch of people from Public Health and other leaders in the community as well about triggers that should cause us to pull back on our efforts on opening and things that should allow us to keep moving forward with opening. And I'll go over just a couple of those so everybody's on the same page. One of the things that helped us decide whether or not we could go along with opening was if the hospitals were able to tell us, yes, we are able to care for these sick individuals, and we are not overwhelmed, and we are not using our surge capacity yet. That was one of the things. Another thing was that our Public Health Department being able to tell us, yes, we are able to contact trace in real time, and we are not behind. So if we see a cluster of 10 people come up, we'll be able to contact trace all those 10 people and be able to nail down so that we can isolate the people that we need to isolate so it doesn't spread any further. Another benchmark was the fact that we didn't have new cases for several days in a row, where we had only single-digit new cases. So remember, for us, single-digit means we can't look at a percent increase because one case would mean 100% increase and you have zero to start with. So that's not necessarily one of the triggers to pull back. So some of the triggers to pull back would be if our Public Health said, hey, too many cases, we can't contact trace. Or we see a very large increase, you know, over 10, 20 cases in a, in a few days back to back. Knowing that the overall incubation period for this virus is usually between two days and two weeks. It could be anywhere in between. We're seeing that usually around seven to 10 days for the incubation period. But if you start to see a few cases rise, you know more cases are on the way. So that's some, another reason to kind of pull back. And obviously, the hospital's saying to us whether or not they are able to handle the capacity. That's the main stuff I wanted to go over for today that's relevant to things moving forward. There's a lot of history with regard to testing. There's a lot of history with regard to cases that we've already gone through. But may, perhaps I can take some questions regarding those. And then if there's specific questions, I'll go over those sections.
Any questions?
This is Councilman Shelton. How are you doing, Doc?
Very good, how are you?
I'm doing well. My concern is that we are trying to keep the level down as much as we can by keeping the social distance. But as we open up, we, we get peaks, and then the peaks go back down. So we need to make our community more aware of more distance in, at this time.
Yes, exactly correct. And so that's, that's what we've been pushing on the press conferences that the media shows up to, which is now three times a week. We've been pushing that. I think the messaging from the city has been pretty clear. They've put up videos about social distancing. Messaging from the county has been clear. So hopefully, people are starting to see that everybody is giving that message of social distancing.
I appreciate, I, I appreciate everything that you're doing and keep up the good work. And any possible way that you can send that information to, to me?
Yes, absolutely. I could definitely get it to the Mayor, and the Mayor can distribute to all of you.
Okay, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Questions?
Dr. Sarah Van, this is Peggy Ding. Thank you again for always being so clear and making things easy to understand for us. One of the things I was curious about is, this week, we are, about 450 of our public safety employees are doing the testing, the antibody testing. And I'm not real sure, you know, they said we'll be able to determine prevalence in the community. But can you sort of explain to us if there's a high percentage of those people that test, that have the antibodies? What that means to us, or if there's a low? I'm not sure I'm real clear on that.
Sure, Peggy, that's a, that's a very good question. I figured that would come up about antibody testing. So let me start by explaining what antibody testing is, and then I'll tell you how the result is important and how it's important, what decisions it can help us make. So antibody testing for COVID is basically a test to look for a protein in your body that the body creates to help fight off an infection. Anytime you get a viral infection, there are some cells, like white blood cells, that'll eat up the virus, process the virus, and create these proteins called antibodies to help fight future infection. When you check for antibodies, what you are, what that antibody test is telling you is whether or not you've been exposed to a virus before. Specifically, the IgG antibody, because there's a couple of different types of antibody. The IgM antibody is usually created as an acute phase. Means you get infected, there's an immediate antibody response. It's very nonspecific because the body hasn't had time to process the virus to provide a specific antibody to neutralize the virus. The IgG antibody, which usually takes several weeks to months, several weeks to months to create. That IgG antibody is the test that we are doing now. So if the test comes back positive, remember, the test is not measuring the level of antibody in the body. It's just measuring whether or not you have it. It's more of a yes or no question. Yes, you have the antibody, no, you don't have the antibody. Yes, you've been exposed before, no, you haven't been exposed before. That's all the information it's given. It's not telling you that just because you have the antibody, you have enough immunity to the virus. To, to, to establish immunity, you need to know how much of the antibody you have. And so if you get a dose of the virus in your body, then you can say, okay, we have a high enough level of antibody to fight off all of those virus particles. So we are only looking for a yes or no right now with antibody test that's available to us. The yes or no will tell us, yes, I've been exposed, or no, I haven't been exposed. So in our case, if we test, let's say, our population in Odessa is 150,000 people. Let's take 1% of that population, 1% of, so 1,500 people. You want to test 1,500 people in order to get a 1% sample size for our community. If you get a 1% sample size, and you're able to test all those people, and let's say 80% of that sample tests positive for the antibody, we can safely say that the virus has gone through our community and is probably out. If 5% or 10% test positive for the antibody, we can safely say the virus has not hit our community. It may not, or it may, but it, at least we know it has not hit our community or gone through our community fully. That's the information for Public Health that would be useful for us to plan. Because if we can establish that 80% have antibodies, that means the virus has gone through, we don't have to be as, I, I don't want to say as cautious because we always have to be cautious. But I do want to say, we don't, we, we can be a little bit more lax on our efforts to control the virus for the future, knowing that the virus has gone through. But if only 5 or 10% have it, then we still need to be extremely vigilant because the virus could still peak at a certain point. Does that help clear up a little bit, Peggy?
Absolutely, that's a great explanation. I just wasn't sure, when we got the answer, that we were going to understand, you know, what, what it meant. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Other questions?
Other questions? Hey, Dr. Sarah Van, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Pull that back up.
Can you pull that up? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Passes unanimously. Devin, if you can scroll up a little bit? Okay, other council actions under previous? Ms. Maldo?
Council for the Housing Authority, Phil George and Rita Badiantis are both willing to serve. They have good attendance for them, for the meeting, and they're ready to serve if you wish to make that appointment. And also, I sent an application from Brady Ross to serve. He's interested in serving in the Midland-Odessa Urban Transit District and on the Traffic Advisory Committee. And he meets requirements for both boards.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
We have a?
Second.
A second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any citizen comments, Norma?
No, sir.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Happy birthday to both.
Happy birthday.
And Mayor, is it time to say again? Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.